Next, council discussion of Nursery Field.
Julie, I'd love to start because the pause was asked. Keith, are you good with me starting?
How could I object to this?
Thank you, Keith. I'm asking Keith because we're the two newest ones on the council. I apologize now. I wrote my statement, and it's long. But I've been spending a lot of time reading and listening, and I figure this is my moment to share with you where I've been. So, bear with me. We are set to vote this evening. Thank you for the dozens upon dozens of letters that we have received. Thank you for the citizens who have stopped me on the street, or texted me a note, or called me directly, to tell me what they think and to share their concerns. We're at an impasse. On the one hand, we heard yesterday from our wonderful Let the Kids Play donors, a clear and unwavering position: approve the artificial turf of Nursery by 11:59 on April 17, or no money. We have heard pleas from those who want compromise and to ask to consider rehabilitating the grass field. Finally, there is a call to keep the bullying to a minimum, and model for our children how words matter and can be hurtful. It seems unfortunately we have allowed this turf debate become so political that, and I've only heard, backroom deals are already being made for the election in November. For the record, I took full advantage of this pause, and I agree that it's gone on a bit too long. I have done my research along with Keith, and Sarah, Josh, and Bill, all in good faith and as promised to this community. We have reached out to people inside and outside the community, and beyond the materials prepared by the consultants that were hired by the former council. The staff has been remarkably accommodating during this time. I'm going to address all the families in the room and watching from home. We've had countless conversations about the environmental and health impacts, so I'm just going to add a few points. I don't need to be repetitive. First, Chris Meyer, where are you? Are you here? Thanks, Chris. This Sunday, in Rye Town Park, we'll be hosting a beach cleanup, from 9:00 to 12:00. We get a dozen volunteers, mostly adults, some youth filling out their community service forms, and lots of scouts. We love our scouts. I hope you all feel welcome to join us. You know what the volunteers are likely to find? I can pass this around if you want. In the sand, along the shore, among the plant life... No, it's not.
I know, I'm worried.
No, it's not. It's small pieces of plastic, right? These small pieces of plastic have traveled from the who knows where. I'm just putting them out there. You can share them if you want. I want people to hear this. One of the things I learned, and I get to say this, is four to 12 million metric tons of plastic enter the ocean each year, enough to cover every foot of coastline on the planet. That is projected to triple in the next 20 years. Just take a pause and take it in. Our fish and wildlife ingest those microplastics, and unfortunately, some of that microplastic debris ends up in the food we eat. Okay. Now, you're all going to shrug your shoulders at me. Talked to so many of you. I like you all. You're going to say, "Jamie, there are plastics everywhere. There are PFAS everywhere." I've had somebody say to me today, "It's hard to find anything out there that doesn't have plastic in it." And you'd all be right, absolutely right. However, I challenge every family in this room to take a moment and understand why this turf decision should not be taken lightly. All of us want our kids to have more time to enjoy the outdoors. No child or parent should ever fear speaking up because someone will shame them on social media. Make no mistake, putting artificial turf in Nursery Field will add pollution to our waterways and trap heat in our neighborhood. When we remove green space, we heat our planet. It's that simple. Anyone in this community, young or older, who wants to express that opinion, should feel free to do so without being made to feel that they don't care about kids or mental health. The marketing has been wrong. Point two. Researchers in Europe, where arguably soccer is more popular than here in the U.S., wanted to know what happened to the plastic green fibers from the tens of thousands of artificial turf fields. And so, they did a study. I will give you all the references you want, taking water samples at 417 sites. Here is what they found. Artificial turf fibers were found in 50% of all collected samples. 62% of those samples came from the sea surface and 37% from the river waters. In turf fibers accounted for more than 11% of the plastic content in river waters and 25% in surface waters. So, all told, they amounted to more than 15% of plastic found in marine environments. Just want us to understand the seriousness. Point three. When I was asked last year during the campaign how I felt about turf, I was clear. I had a lot to learn, but I was not and still not against turf where it already exists, like on school and university campus. I really get that it's hard to take away something that has already been given. What felt wrong to me was placing a new artificial plastic turf on a standalone green field tucked into a neighborhood where the backyards are small and the roads busy. And then, I did my research, and guess what I found? The regulatory environment in New York and New England and across the country is shifting away from turf, just as we are leaning in. There are bills and laws popping up in state houses across the country. Chrome rubber as an infill is on the way out, thank goodness. Good for Rye. But I have also learned that recycling these turfs every eight to 10 years will be harder and harder and more expensive. It is a cost, as taxpayers, we need to be aware of. Just stating what my feelings are. According to the synthetic turf, for those of you who don't know, David Nardone was once, or may still be, I don't know, a consultant who is a member of the synthetic turf, estimates that if even half the material in a school turf field is recycled, 225,000 pounds will still be sent to landfill. Once installed, restoring an area previously covered in turf back to grass or plants will be challenging. Most people will opt to simply lay down a new sheet and continue the cycle. Finally, in many of our calls conducting during the pause, Josh joined me on one of them, and we spoke with the mayor and the deputy mayor in Larchmont. This was a fabulous meeting. All of you people from Let the Kids Play would be so thrilled. They are our peers, and they shared our desire to partner with us, to seek out grants together, and to investigate the latest technologies and turf management techniques for improving the playability of recreation grass fields. They also shared, though, that if they knew what they knew today, they would never have turfed the much-famed Alma Park, Alma Field. Okay, I'm looking around. I know you're glazing over, but I'm going to keep talking. For those of you in the audience who have never been to Flint Park, it's a large recreation campus managed by the village of Larchmont. It sits adjacent to Hommets Middle School and along the shoreline of Larchmont. Like us, it has similar issues: flood-prone areas, too much rain, precious ecosystems, and a growing demand for recreation fields. Their lone turf field is fenced and in disrepair. It was constructed in 2008, and in 2024, some 16 years later, it is just about now to be replaced. I encourage you to go and look. It's not pretty. The other rectangular baseball fields are in much need of rehabilitation, good drainage, and ongoing field maintenance. Like my colleagues in Larchmont, elected officials, they want to invest in their grass infrastructure, and they want to do it with us. So, I just want to also mention, we are really lucky to have Aaron Manson, Ryan Coyne, keeping our grass baseball fields and softball fields the envy of the area. We are lucky that the DPW took initiative and created our amphitheater, and now it's time we invested in the care of our grass rectangular fields. It is time that we have the conversation that is comprehensive and inclusive of our entire community. It's time we stop fighting over artificial grass and get down to the business of taking care of all of our recreation spaces. You elected us to act responsibly, to look to the past, to learn from our mistakes, and plan prudently for the future. The process for getting to this place was fraught from the beginning. We have jumped to artificial turf before exploring best practices in grass management. I know many of you disagree with me. Just stating for the record, because I know you need to hear it from me. I have a letter here with someone from the community, and I'd like to close with that letter. As a courtesy, I'm going to keep their name private, and you will understand why shortly. Dear Councilman Jensen, thank you for your work for our city. As I sit here in the packed Memorial Sloan Kettering Chemotherapy Suite, I can't help but find myself thinking of the impending decisions regarding Nursery Field. I am here, one of many, battling cancer that I have no genetic predisposition to, no known risk factors for, a cancer that was mostly defined because by some combination of unknown exposures within my environment. It is with this unfortunate life experience, along with my training as a scientist and medical doctor, who has cared for countless patients who suffer from this illness, likely caused by environmental exposure, that I am writing to you. I urge you to move forward with a resolution for revitalization of Nursery Field to the state-of-art natural grass, with improved drainage and restored wetlands. Instead of moving forward with an artificial field that will fill our environments with microplastics, carcinogens, and endocrine modifiers, there is ample evidence that well-engineered, maintained fields with carefully-selected natural grass can increase playing time dramatically, without the added risk to health and safety that installation, maintenance, and replacement and disposal of an artificial field brings. Not to mention, the increase in injuries proven to occur with artificial fur. Experts agree that fields have not been proven to be safe for human exposure during play, and they have not been proven to be safe to live directly adjacent to. Currently, there are at least two families who live adjacent to the field who are battling cancer as we speak. Please, with respect to all who have battled and lost lives to cancer, to all of those who suffer from chronic life-limiting diseases like diabetes and asthma due to exposure to endocrine modifiers, do not knowingly add carcinogens and endocrine modifiers to our environment so close to homes where people with life-threatening diseases live. Please, in honor of our precious ecosystem of fish who are found full of microplastics, of birds who are losing habitats daily, and microcosms who are necessary for oxygen, please do not add plastics, PFAS, and carcinogens that mutate human DNA and animal, plant life, and aquatic life. Please demonstrate the intelligent, forward-thinking, compassionate leadership that you were elected for, and resolve to move forward with the renovation of Nursery Field with natural grass. Funds to help support this has been offered and will be raised. And to the Let the Kids Play, please remind them of the great advice of Mick Jagger: "You can't always get what you want, but if you try sometimes, you might find you get what you need." That letter I read felt important for this moment. It felt important that we remind our kids that when we were in our battle to argue for turf, that we need to be very, very, very careful, very, very careful that we listen to everybody. And that's all I'm saying. We are going to have a discussion tonight. You all know how I stand. I'm not against turf. I'm against turf in Nursery Field. I wanted that letter to be there for you all. I know that it makes you angry because you feel like you've been working at this forever, but you need, you need to be able to listen. There's been too much social media bullying. That's it. Anyone else want to speak? They can.
Anyone else?
We have spent, as far as during this pause, which was critically important, because there were four of us knew, three of us knew on the city council, and it was very important for us to spend the time to dig into this. I strongly feel that that did not occur over last summer with the last city council. We have been incredibly productive since this pause started. It was not our intention to continue this pause as long as what it lasted, until April 17. What we were attempting to do while we extended it out was to have all seven of us here. We felt it was probably the most controversial, the most discussed issue that Rye, probably Greg's been here for quite a long time, you can probably contest to it, maybe I'm wrong, maybe I'm right. Kristen's been here for an extended period of time, but I don't think we're going to come across an issue that was this heavily contested, and that the sides were so absolutely... It was amazing that such intelligent, dedicated people went to the point that they did in defending their position. We have been incredibly productive during this time, contrary to these continuous letters that we're a bunch of clowns, and we should be embarrassed by ourselves for affecting our children as we are delaying this process out. I can't imagine, it's incredible the number of hours we spend. I'm sure it's in the hundreds of hours that we spent researching this. This battle isn't just in Rye. This battle is across the country, and it seems like every town that's out there. It's only increased over time when people are becoming more and more conscious and informed about PFAS. And there's numerous, in Albany, there's a bill regarding forbidding the use of chrome rubber on turf fields. There's bills in a lot of states across the country. California has incredibly strict guidelines, and I know we've spoken with Matt and Let the Kids Play, and they're willing to adhere to those strict guidelines that California has. If we go with a turf option, we are going to be doing what we can do to make it as safe as possible, because it's really what Jamie was saying, and she was incredible. Jamie and Sarah, it's just, we're grateful that Sarah decided to jump in here for a year and get involved here. She's been invaluable. There are Josh and Bill. We've exchanged so many emails. I mentioned when I walked in there today to Jamie, I said, "Wow, it's 5:30, and I haven't spoken to you yet today." That doesn't happen in months. We talk all the time. Josh is the only one that has a real job, and I can't imagine the financial cost this was to you by all the time that you were occupied in dealing with this.
I literally have a full-time job.
Julie does.
Yes, Julie, I understand that, but I'm saying from our side, doing our work, your work was already done. We dug into this over the last four months very, very deeply. That's the point that I'm making. So, as far as that's concerned, my intent, going back when I was running, was my kids are now sophomores and juniors in college. They were dealing with these horrible fields, going back when they were in the third grade when we first moved here. These fields are horrible in this town, but we had a lot of other issues that were more important to complete over the time. However, the last six years, we've gotten through a lot of those other capex improvement issues that we needed to cover, but for whatever reason, turf wasn't introduced until the Let the Kids Play people got involved with this. And for them, I'm grateful because this had to get started. It had to get fixed. My goal is to fix both Sterling and Nursery in the next 12 months. We owe that to our kids. It has to get done. These guys want to help us out, we're trying to work with them on that. It needs to get done because these fields are absolutely disgraceful. Our high school situation is even more disgraceful. We have championship teams that have to go to Porchester because the Board of Education isn't providing them with fields here. Maybe with Sterling, we can work with the Board of Education in partnership to potentially get the problem solved over there, which is going to be a little more costly potentially than what we would see at Nursery. But we need to fix the fields for our kids. I don't know how we've survived in accomplishing championship teams with the fields that we have. So, as far as where we're going with this, my goal is to, there's a number of options that we've gone, we've explored, and we've explored every option that there is. We were looking at Nursery Lane, which is a, I don't know if you're familiar with that, but it was over, a little league field over on the other side of the highway, over by the roadhouse. We were looking at a piece of property over there, which some of you may know of, and some of you may not, but we're looking to somehow shuffle around buildings and different storage vehicles and things over to that property so we could free up some more space here on this side of Rye and Dismar Park, perhaps. We've looked at every option available. It was horrible that we missed out on Rye Country Day property. Maybe they're going to provide some field time to us in the future, but we can't count on that, I don't think, in any means. Jamie set up a visit that Josh and I went on over to Crawford Park. There's a great field over Crawford Park, and they're right now going through renovations on their baseball field, which is also a soccer field. It was interesting to hear the people from Crawford Park say that Marinerick actually rents field space from them, but they don't have anybody from Rye user groups that have ever approached them. So, that's going to be a brand-new grass field over there. That their existing field is in incredible shape. Their existing field they're replacing is leaps and bounds ahead of the fields that we have at Nursery and at Sterling right now. So, there are a lot of options close by, but all I have to say is that if you feel that we did not spend our time productively over the last four months, you're absolutely just wrong, and you have to appreciate the time that everybody has put into this, and the number of hours that we've spent talking with each other, the number of hours that we spent reading each other's emails with different studies and every single angle you could possibly imagine. There's not, if we were field, we're so field-constrained here. We don't have, if we were Bedford, it must be great to be there. You could have grass fields everywhere. But the thing is, we aren't there. We're very much field-constrained, and we need, we're going to have to probably go with a turf field somewhere, either at Sterling or at Nursery, because we just need the 100% utilization instead of maybe at most an 80% with a grass field. There's just too much sports to be taking up these fields. So, I hope all of you appreciate it, and I hope, whatever the outcome of this, just please come together as a community and work together, and not be continuously so hostile towards each other, because that's really disappointing. And it's, we're doing this all for our kids. We're making these fields better for our kids, but the example that we're setting, by the way we're going back and forth with each other, that's horrible for our kids. Granted, you might see that on the national level, the bickering and the ridiculousness that goes on at the national level, but we don't need that in Rye. I have said too much already, so Sarah, I'd love to hear something from you, because you always offer such great words of wisdom.
I don't have. I think both you and Jamie said pretty much everything that we've been talking about, thinking about for the last few months. I do want to thank the community for allowing us to have that pause. I know that it was probably upsetting for some, frustrating for others. Maybe others were grateful for it. I certainly was grateful for it, even though I had been on the council when the project was first proposed. I had not in a million years thought that I would be back up here.
I'm so thankful you are.
I am. Well, thank you. But I have to say, it was not something that I was thinking about beyond reading about it in my Rye or Rye Record, or reading about it on social media, which I do agree with both Jamie and Keith, and I suspect everybody sitting up here, that the social media communication has been really upsetting, and I think is one that is so divisive and doesn't need to happen. So, I don't think I have anything more to say than thank you for allowing us the opportunity to get up to speed, and I think that we all want some action taken. So, let's kind of get into next steps and what's going on from there so that we can actually move forward.
Are there other comments?
So, I was going to say, Sarah mentioned next steps, and I think everybody should have an opportunity up here to speak, and I'd just like to lay out the mechanics so that everybody understands what's before us, because there are a couple of pieces to this. I'm grateful for what Keith and Jamie and Sarah have said about what we've been doing for the last four months. We really do care. There's a real sense of commitment to trying to make our community as terrific as we can for all its residents. We recognize that our children need robust recreational facilities. We also recognize that we have a need for green spaces and concerns about the environment and health and safety, and these things have been clashing as we've been trying to parse it all, figure out what the best way forward is. We've also been working on a clock to try to get to a conclusion on this particular issue quickly. I'm the one who proposed the pause at the beginning back in January, and my vision was that we pause for two weeks so we could all do a little reading. For a variety of reasons, it took us, there was a lot to read, and there were a variety of reasons about getting everybody together, but here we are. And we are committed to, I believe, we are all solidly committed to taking some next and definitive steps this evening. I'm not entirely sure what they're going to turn out to be, but I think there is that real commitment. And part of the design of the pause is that if we did nothing, the things that were set in motion with prior council would just happen. And the idea there was to keep the clock on it, because we really did, I know the pause is maybe frustrating for some of you, and you interpreted it however you did. Somehow, I earned an imaginary dog in the process, which has been a lot of fun, but it wasn't designed to create delay. It was designed to create momentum and bring this to a head, and not let this thing just keep getting kicked on and on. And so, the mechanics are, if we do nothing, the work that was set in motion before just happens, or we can take some affirmative steps and modify, or take a different direction, or do any number of things. So, that's the setup for tonight. I would ask that at the appropriate time, I've got a couple of completely conflicting resolutions, depending on which way we're going to go, and I think it'd be helpful if folks, after we talk some more, you'd indulge me just with the order of those resolutions, because I think it'll just help with clarity. They're simple. We can move through them, and you know, people can say whatever they want. But I think one of our commitments is to really give everyone a chance to listen and consider some of the logic here. I'm absolutely committed to making sure that our kids have robust playing surfaces, and I'm committed to the health and welfare of our environment.
Do you have something, Bill?
Sure.
So, I guess so far, everything is clear as mud. So, the pause has been very helpful to me. To me, this is a balancing of some really thoughtful environmental concerns versus what's best for our kids. I have learned through this pause that we have looked at all the other locations. I believe Nursery Field is the best location to put artificial turf. I think there is a need to put artificial turf on one field in Rye, one Rye Rec field. We've got, all the other ones are grass, and you know, this is not a Democrat or Republican issue, and there are good people on both sides of this issue, and different people can have different opinions. One thing that I do know is that the generous donor group has offered to pay for this, and I think it's pretty hard to say that we want to do a lot to improve all the fields and look away at a generous donation. Essentially, it's $3 million, but it's really more than that, because if we don't accept the donation, the city's already out of pocket about $300,000, and we're going to, the city's going to have to spend money to fix the drainage. And we're going to, the city's going to have to spend money to fix the drainage at Nursery Field. That's not going to come from the donors. And so I think, you know, you can have all the debate you want. To me, I don't see how we turn away a very generous donation. These people have worked very hard and they're very good people and they're very good people on both sides. So I'd be interested in hearing your motions, Josh, and seeing where we go here. My vote is for artificial turf at Nursery and we'll see how that all plays out with, you know, I'm not sure exactly, you know, how you want to do that, but that's my decision. I've been pretty firm about it for about a month. I've talked to everybody about it, maybe more than some people would like. And everyone's entitled to their own opinion, but that's my opinion.
I'd just like to make a few clarifying statements, because there's so much misinformation that seems to be still swirling and we have always been talking about turf that would not contain PFAS, that would be Prop 65 compliant. That is always, that was the part of the resolution that was made, so it's a little disingenuous to invoke that argument. We've been firm about that. We've never talked about AstroTurf. We've never talked about Chrome Rubber. We've talked about organic infill. We've talked about no PFAS.
No, I agree with you. I actually said that, Julie. I was talking about the, literally the plastic. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Sorry. That was rude. I apologize. Go for it. That was really rude. I apologize.
The other point I'd like to make is natural grass. If natural grass could withstand the use that we give it, I would be all for it, 100%. Why wouldn't I want grass over turf? Problem is, natural grass can only safely and maintainably be used, if you're, be supported if your usage is lower than 10 to 15 hours per week. And unfortunately, but fortunately, our kids and our community are using it multiples more than that. We're using those fields 36 to 45 hours a week. And when you look at what field surfaces support that usage, the only option is synthetic turf. So, you know, and I've said this to people who have written, say it again, if grass worked, I'm all in. Problem is that it doesn't. Not for the usage, not for, if you look at the field now, it's mud, it's not safe. And I would further say, as a fiscal steward, putting money into a field that we know can't withstand our use seems like a fiscally irresponsible thing to do. So if I knew, hey, putting $3 million into new grass and new drainage there would solve all of our problems, great, but it wouldn't. We'd still end up with a mud pit. It still wouldn't be usable 50% of the time and that would have been a waste of $3 million. I am disheartened that this has become so fractious for our community. It's not, it's not been our best look, Rye. Our community needs this field, all of them. It needs this field to be operational. Our kids need it, our community needs it. It's time to end the pause. And I hope we do that tonight.
And if there's no further comment, I'd like to move on to the next agenda item.
Well, I'd like to make a motion and all explain the motion and I have a feeling that's going to lead to some further discussion and maybe some other motions. In my use of the time, I feel that the real issue at Nursery is drainage and the problems there, and having looked at it informally with people who know a lot more about turf than I do, that field could be rehabilitated, improved. We have not been, we have not been taking care of our fields with an organized rehabilitation and maintenance program the way we do with our streets. I feel like we have considered one option heavily. We've looked a little bit about some other things. The country is moving away from synthetic turf for many of the reasons that Jamie raised. I'm not quite sure why we would lean in to something that I think is going to be ever more problematic. I'm the one person up here who's sat on a board that was the proud owner of a synthetic field and we're on our third one over there. There are a lot of challenges. The obvious ones have to do with weather. It's expensive. There are a lot of smaller challenges and problems with managing and owning a synthetic field and I would rather we started with a grass field, that we fixed the drainage. I'm not talking about throwing down grass seed. I'm talking about completely rehabilitating the drainage situation there, raising the field, having an expert come in who looks at these things through the lens of grass fields, natural grass, and really developing that. I also think at the same time, we need to develop a plan and a better understanding of what the options are at Sterling Field in terms of its size, what is the right kind of surface for it, is a natural grass field appropriate there or is a synthetic turf a more appropriate cap on what is already a brown field? And I simply don't know the answer. We don't know the answer to that question. I also think, separate and apart from what we do at Nursery, and I hope this isn't at all controversial, separate apart from what we do at Nursery and separate apart from what we may do at Sterling, that we make a commitment as a community to look at all of our fields and develop a more strategic plan for improving their viability across all the needs that they're faced with on a regular basis. But sticking to the issue at hand, I'd like to see us move quickly with Nursery Field, but I'd like to see us do it as a natural grass field. I understand that might be frustrating the donors and it would be on the city to fund that. And so I have a motion here to commence development of a plan that asks for the city manager to develop a budget and a plan, timeline and source of funds for, as quickly as possible, installing a fully rehabilitated natural grass field based on a lot of the insights we received from visiting other communities with natural grass fields here in Westchester who are finding them to be very successful. And there's a detailed resolution that Kristen can send around, so everybody has it in front of them.
I'm sorry. You're asking this, to spend money? City money?
Yes, as we've been doing for.
Wait, just to be clear. It's not a drainage issue, it's a usage issue. So you want to spend city money to explore an option that we know does not solve the problem?
I believe it does solve the problem.
But experts have told us that it's not true.
Let me make the motion and then we can discuss it. Everybody can talk about it and share their thoughts and then we can have a vote and then we can keep on going until we get it right. So I won't read all the texts, I'll just summarize that we acknowledge our commitment to playing fields. We made some decisions as council with prior council members last December to move forward with a plan for a synthetic field. This would reverse that. We'd move forward with the plan to improve Nursery Field, improve the playtime there. We would also evaluate Sterling Field. We would be agnostic as to the surface at Sterling Field. We would see what the experts say. And so the resolution would be that we rescind the actions we took back on December 6th and December 20th, that we take advantage of increased resources and have somebody work on our fields across Rye and we develop a plan with funding in the amount of up to We would then ask that the city manager develop a project for drainage installation and then improve grass field at Nursery and spend up to $100,000 on design, regulatory activities and bid documents. And then we would ask our city manager to engage consultants and similarly investigate initially what's involved in addressing the field at Sterling Field and based on advice from the city manager, we would want a $50,000 allocation for that. So that's the motion. Do I have a second and then we should discuss it?
Councilwoman Cunningham?
No.
Councilwoman Goddard?
Yes.
Councilwoman Henderson?
No.
Councilwoman Jensen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Nathan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Souza?
No.
And contact.
Fails.
Okay, so that motion does not go forward.
So what else is in your pocket?
So, a lot of us have spent a lot of time trying to figure out how to make the best out of the direction we all feel we're heading in, which is with a synthetic field being developed and installed at Nursery Field. And so there's a motion, there's a resolution, Kristen can pass it around, that we've all worked on there.
Sorry, just to be clear, this is the one that is titled, "Rye City Council Resolution Dated April 17th Concerning Nursery Field, Etc."
Yes.
I really love this group. We work so well together. Here.
So this is something that has had a lot of input. Bill, this incorporates a lot of your ideas, most of your ideas. It's actually built off of a draft that you sent us.
Yeah, but which I, which has changed and I had no time to look at it today because I was sitting in jury duty, getting questioned by a bunch of moron lawyers. And I've had no time to look at this today, other than briefly before the meeting.
Well, let's go through it then.
Go through it and we'll talk. Because I do have some problems with it.
Do you mind taking us through it?
I think you are in a, you're definitely.
You're forgetting a sickie-ear for me, but all right. So, at the top in the sort of outline of what this is about, we explain that the city of Rye is committed to improving its recreational playing fields so as to increase availability for organized use sports. I think that's something that I think hopefully all of us in the community, however you feel about this particular solution, agree is a good thing and an important objective for the city of Rye. We also acknowledge that there is, the Rye Athletic Fund, a nonprofit, also known as Let the Kids Play. They do have their 501(c)(3) status. Thanks for clarifying that, getting that done. They have stepped up and generously offered to agree to pay for the cost of installing a synthetic turf field at Nursery. At Nursery Field, not Nursery Field, sorry for the typo. And reimbursing the city for all preparatory soft costs already spent. On December 6th and the 20th, we took that concept, the prior council, we passed resolutions setting forth terms for moving forward with a synthetic turf field project. On January 10th, we paused it. We've talked about the pause. And this proposal presumes that we've determined it's in the public interest to move forward with rehabilitating Nursery Field to address the drainage issues and the negative impact on playtime and that the solution that we would like to move forward with is Nursery Field project, i.e. the synthetic field, using the generous resources that the donors have told us they would provide and that we would do this in keeping with the December 6th resolution that the field would be free of any PFAS as verified by an independent third party. Those are detailed in an earlier resolution the council passed. I'm not going to get into all the technicalities there, but we did set some guardrails on what we would find is an acceptable solution. And so in addition to that, in the event that for some reason the support from the donor group fails, we would still remain committed to improving our fields and in that case, we would move forward with a grass field if we can't secure the funds through the donor group. That's a backstop and the reason for that is, again, our mission here is to improve our fields. If the donors step up, we thank you. It's very generous. We know you've put a lot of work into it. There's a problem, we're still going to go ahead and remain committed to our fields. So the resolution before us, and Bill, oh, sorry, I neglected that. In addition to that, we also believe it's important in keeping with the overall objective here to look at Sterling Field. That playing field has been, has a lot of problems and we want to see approaches to formally addressing that. It's not enough to just bring on one field. It's not going to be, it's not going to satisfy our needs. Whatever we put in it at Nursery, we're still going to have to move on and we should get going on that now and so we're going to be asking the city manager to take initial steps similar to what I'd outlined earlier to examine Sterling Field and see what's required there. One of the challenges we've had as a community is, and this is not men to point fingers at any prior council, but we just as a community, set our fields and tend to forget them. We need to be a little more proactive here. That's why we're in the situation we're in and that's why our fields are in the condition they're in. So we need to start taking an active look at all of them and we need to do that with Sterling as well. So regarding Nursery Field, we would, and this is your proposal, item one, Bill, we would reverse the December 6th resolution in terms of spending $100,000 and going to bid. We would also not be executing and would reverse the December 20th resolution that laid out a set of terms and conditions for accepting the gift and instead we would have new terms and conditions which, Bill, you laid out.
These are different from the ones that I laid out.
There are differences and I'll point them out as we go through it. I think you're one of the smartest guys I know. I think you'll keep up with me.
Yes, I will.
So we would accept the donor group's generous donation, advance the Nursery Field project to completion, subject to the donor group fulfilling conditions specified below. We would, the donor group would, as previously communicated to us, raise a minimum of $3 million, which is the anticipated cost. And within 30 days, and I believe there was a discussion last night about the donor group being ready to pursue that, and so we would be moving quickly. Those funds would be deposited into a special city account, so we don't have any questions about having the funds and none of that gets filed up and we can move quickly. The city manager would set that up. The monies will be returned in full to the donor group, net of soft costs incurred by the city, 290, if for any reason the project does not go forward. Those are your terms, Bill. I'm just using your same terms. Number five, once the steps outlined above are satisfied, Bill, this is yours, $100,000 will be provided by the donor group so that the staff can engage consultants to commence the work on construction documents and move forward with the bid. The donor group is welcome to move forward with that before bringing the $3 million if they wish to expedite the bid process. If the total cost of the project, including the 290 and the $100,000 estimated for bidding, exceed $3 million, again, this is you, Bill, the donor group will raise and provide the additional monies to the city to cover those costs. Upon completion of the bid documents, the solicitation of the bids and acceptable bid being received, the donor group will formally donate the full amount of the cost of Nursery Field project to the city, including the reimbursement of the soft costs. If the total cost of the project exceed $3 million, the donor group will provide additional funds for the full cost of the project within 45 days after the receipt of the bids and before the city awards the contract. Again, number seven, that's right from you, Bill. The city manager will consult. This is for. Bill. Uh, the city manager will consult. This is for, uh, the folks in the neighborhood who've had a lot of issues with this.
And this one is...
This is new.
This is new.
This is partly, this is, the first half of it is what you said, Bill, and the second half is, uh, some additional thinking on it.
Josh, I mean, you've, you've, you've changed this and, and you say some of this stuff is from me and that is true, some of the stuff is from me, but we've changed a lot of things that was, were in here. So, I mean, if you want to read it, go ahead and read it, but don't, please don't say like, this is from me, this is from me, because I, I am not apt to...
I didn't set out, I didn't set out the business terms. You, you set out the business terms, so I, I got...
But these are different from the business terms that we were discussing last night.
I, I don't believe so, Bill. I, I think we should listen to what Josh has to say and I highly doubt that he's making a, an illusion on this because it's...
Well, I'll speak after he's finished.
It's easily disproved if what he's saying is not true. So I think that he's probably being truthful with this.
I'm doing the very best I can.
I, I'll respond after he speaks, Keith. I don't need you to, to claim that he's being truthful. Let, let, I, I don't think he's being untruthful. I'm just saying...
Sounds like you are.
Okay, let's just finish reading, please, Josh.
Because I agree to some of these terms doesn't mean I agree to the whole thing.
You might not. That's okay. I'm just...
All right, let's just continue.
Please finish reading.
I'm highlighting the points that I've gotten from you.
Let's just continue.
Right. City manager will consult with citizens from the neighborhoods surrounding Nursery Field to address concerns regarding project aesthetics, planting of trees, shrubbery, et cetera, beautification projects. And the city manager's discretion will incorporate such plans into the Nursery Field Project plans. And this is new. To that end, the city commits to spend an amount no less than a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and not to exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on such beautification projects and may use any amounts received from the donor group that are not used for the installation of the field or the bidding or the soft costs. In other words, if there's money that we've received that's left over, we'll put it into the beautification. If there's not, uh, the city will make up the difference, uh, using its capital funds. The change there, Bill, that I made was originally, we just had that the donors were going to pay for beautification costs. There was no amount of money. It seemed, uh, like we needed to put some kind of budget here and I didn't feel it was appropriate to ask the donors for more. Uh, their, their gift is generous and there's a lot here, uh, and it, it can be on us, the city, the taxpayers, uh, to, uh, work on the area around the field. Um, if the adequate funds are provided by the donor group, the city will move forward with the project and make all reasonable efforts to complete the project. If for any reason the project does not go forward, the city will return all money not already spent to the donor group. Again, and, and the return of money will be net of soft costs already expended and if any other costs expended at the time, it is determined that the project will not be completed. That's, that's, again, from the draft I was given, Bill. Uh, item 10 is also from your draft. The city manager shall work with Rye Rec to establish a regimen of user fees for Nursery Field with the goal to collect significant amounts of funds to fund replacement costs of the synthetic turf at the end of the useful life. In other words, we need a business plan and the city manager can work with Rec to make sure that when we get to the end of the life of this field, we have funds to replace the carpet or do whatever's appropriate so that this, uh, becomes, uh, an evergreen or ever synthetic green field. And the city council can determine at that time, uh, whether, uh, new synthetic turf surface is appropriate or whether there are other components, uh, that should be replaced or if natural grass should be re, uh, considered. All of that would be sometime in the future, uh, but the idea is to keep the field, uh, going. Any monies collected in excess of the cost of the replacement of surface shall be preserved for future improvements to the field. Again, that's right out of what I was given. Uh, and I'll highlight the differences, Bill, when we get to the end. Item 11, again, from what I was given. The city will take advantage of increased resources by hiring a consultant to review existing grass playing fields other than Nursery with the goal towards putting a plan and resources in place to make Rye Rec's grass playing surfaces better and more resilient. City manager's respect, is requested to come back to the city council with a plan and costs. The necessary funds to hire a consultant shall come from the general project account, shall not exceed an initial amount of fifty thousand dollars.
I think you have an extra zero in there.
That's true.
Yes, that is true.
Trying to sneak that in. I'm not a very truthful guy.
For catching that.
Hey, you, Keith, did you slip that one in?
I don't know how that got in there. I didn't touch that, but anyway.
Was that in Bill's original?
That must have been.
We're gonna have to look.
I think it was...
Say anything about that.
Anyway, uh, uh, again, at the time for replacement of the Nursery Field synthetic turf, eight to 10 years from now is what's anticipated. The city will make a determination as to whether it wants to re-turf with synthetic turf or go back to grass. I, I think, I think the point here is that we're not just going to set it and forget it. We're going to have to be active in making sure that whatever we have here continues to endure. Um, Rye Rec will continue to keep records of field use and availability for organizational team play for Nursery Field and for all improved grass fields up to the time synthetic turf is to be replaced at Nursery. This will inform, this, inform the city council as to its decision whether Nursery should be re-turfed with grass or synthetic turf at the time such turf needs to be replaced. Uh, consistent with adequate maintenance of the fields, Rye Rec will make the best efforts to keep all fields, turf, grass, open year round for free play and to keep records of such field availability. Um, this is all, again, what, what was shared with us, uh, and, and we've included it. Uh, item 15, uh, has, has, uh, some changes to it. Uh, we did put, it was in the original draft, in the event the donor group is unable to raise funds or otherwise fails to meet the requirements of paragraph four, uh, this resolution will be null and void with respect to the Nursery Field Project and the city will then proceed with an alternative project for drainage installation and improved grass field at Nursery Field with plans to be provided by the city manager. Uh, and the city manager would then be directed to engage whatever consultants are necessary to design, uh, pursue the necessarily regulatory activities and bid documents, uh, to install a natural grass field, uh, and may use funds not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars. Again, this is a backstop. If the synthetic field process goes forward, this is irrelevant. If it doesn't, we're still going to fix the field. Um, and then the, uh, so the change here, Bill, is we've put an amount of money, uh, based on Greg's recommendation, uh, for, uh, being able to investigate and develop that project. Uh, we just didn't have an amount of money there before. Um, and then the last item, uh, at the same time, regardless of all of the above, the city manager will...
And this is new.
And this is new, will, uh, is authorized to spend up to fifty thousand dollars, uh, to analyze, uh, and figure out what our options are for Sterling Field. Um, again, uh, the same concept outlined earlier. So 16 is new. The hundred thousand dollar, uh, price tag on if we pursue grass is new before it was silent.
That's in 15.
That's in, that's in item 15. The amount allocated to beautification, we didn't have an amount of money there before. We've put an amount, a range of money there, uh, so that we can ensure that neighborhood that...
What item is that?
Beautification is item eight.
Okay.
Uh, and that has, uh, a budget of one fifty to two fifty so that we can assure that neighborhood that, um, while they may not be happy with what we're doing, we're going to make it as appealing and beautiful, uh, for them and for the community at large. That's the make lemonade out of lemons provision and I think it's something we, we, I, I don't. Anyway, that's what's different there. Uh, and then the item that is different above that is we've, uh, put a clock on the raising of the money of 30 days.
Which, which one is that?
And that is item four.
Thirty.
Thirty days, uh, we were told that...
Has this been shared with the funding group?
The thirty day concept was...
No, this document. I mean, there's a lot of things you're trying to bind them to in this and I'm curious if they've had an opportunity to look at it.
Our understanding from talking, and obviously I don't want to, uh, put words in your mouth, was that you had, uh, shared the concepts with the funding group and that...
But have they seen this? My question, it's just a yes or no question. Have they seen this resolution?
No, but, but, uh, the, nobody's, nobody in the public has seen it.
So, 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 let's, let's just...
Nobody in the public has seen it.
Let, let me just say that, um, we didn't start talking about this resolution. Well, I had drafted a, a resolution quite a while earlier because I was advocating for us having synthetic turf at Nursery and I was trying to get people's, um, um, votes for that and, and, and we, we've had a number of discussions for, for a number of months. And, um, and I know you all were, were discussing, you know, other options. And, uh, so last night, apparently a, a vote changed and, and you all came to me and said, "Let's try to, um, see if we can draft something." And so, we started at five last night. I missed a meeting, um, and we started drafting this. And, um, and, um, I, I didn't see this again till five o'clock tonight. Um, it, it's changed quite substantially. Some, some big changes are, I, I, I think if we're going to be, if we're all going to be agreeing that we want, um, we want the donor group to donate the money, I think we should be making it easier not harder on them to do that. If we're saying we really want the money and we really want a turf nursery school, we should, nursery field, um, we should be making it easier not harder. And, um, there are things in here that, that, that are, that I think do that. Um, there's also, um, some other things that we can discuss. What I would really appreciate, since we started negotiating this document and then it showed up tonight, and I haven't had any input into a lot of these changes, I would really appreciate if we could, um, do some more work on this document and see if there's something that, that we could collaboratively come up with, that we could all feel comfortable voting for. Um, I really thought that's what we were doing. I, I really don't appreciate how this thing has evolved. I know it's last minute and I know it's a rush and everybody wants to get it done, but I think we can do a much better job. I'm happy to have a special meeting next week. I'm happy to extend this one more week.
I don't think anybody wants to send the...
I don't think anyone does, but I, but this is not ready in my view.
So...
This is, okay, let me, let me finish.
Yeah, no, of course.
We started out trying to work on something together and it just...
Yeah.
You stopped wanting to work with me. And, 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 and I, I really think we could come up with a much better document that's, that's better for everybody. Um, if we just have a little bit more time, I'm happy to spend all day, you know, Saturday and all day Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, working on this to come up with a document I think that we could all say, "This makes sense. I think it should be shared with the donors." I think we, we, if everyone's agreeing, let's, let's do the donation. So let's, let's make sure that we, we do it right. I mean, if, if we're all agreeing, you know, we want, we want them to donate, then let's just see if we can all work together and, and make this thing workable instead of having more, you know, disagreement on, on this. And, and so I would really appreciate that. Um, and I don't think we need to say, "Okay, this is it. Time's up. We need to do it." Um, I don't think this is, i- is better for the city. There, there's, there's some other things that we've talked about that aren't in here that, that I think are problematic. And, and so, but I, I don't want to talk about them on the dais. I'd like to talk about them in private so we can try to hash some, some more of these things out. We just lost a day and part of that's the problem because I all of a sudden had jury duty. Um, but, but I really would appreciate if we could table this. Let's, let's have a special, let's look at our calendars. Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, we could have a special meeting and get this done. I, I, I don't think it, it hurts to, to wait a couple of days. Let's share this with the donor group. Let's make sure that, hey, we're asking them to, to donate the money. Let's make sure it, you know, this is an agreement that's going to work instead of, you know, we, we come back a week later and, and we find out, well, you know, this is a problem, that's a problem, whatever. I think we want this to work. I think everybody up here wants it to work. Um, I don't think this agreement works.
Yeah, so, so, uh...
Go ahead, I'm sorry, Sarah.
No, I, the, the, a couple of things. Um, we didn't change it substantially. That's just a fact. This was, uh, a, a document. Maybe some words were changed when we sent them, uh, sent the draft to, uh, Greg and Kristen to, uh, you know, sort of refine it and nail it down, but the general concepts have not changed, so much so that, uh, because this was your document, and so much so that when we spoke yesterday, you, uh, called the donor group to ask them, because we originally said thirty, thirty days.
And then we agreed to sixty.
Let me, can I just finish?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, exactly. So there was that level of specificity that was already going on. There was never, at any time during our, during our hours of conversations, Bill, that we, that we, that you ever said, "Oh my goodness, this is a new document. I can't handle this."
I said it to you at five o'clock tonight.
Yes, but you didn't...
And I haven't had a chance for really...
Can I finish, Bill?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Let me finish.
Okay.
You never said yesterday, when we spent hours on the telephone, talking about this, going through your document, revising it, editing it, saying what we, what we all wanted or what we didn't want, to the point where you said, "Let me call the, one of the members of the donor group to see if thirty days would work." You got back, you said, "I'll call. I'm going to get back to you immediately." You got back to us and you said, "That person said it would be difficult, but it would be doable." That was what we were told. So...
Why is, why is thirty days so important? Why not sixty days? That's a lot more reasonable time period.
Well, she's just going through the, the whole chronology. She's just going through the chronology of what went on yesterday, which seems like a little bit different from your story. So, Sarah, could you please go ahead?
Thanks. So that was, that was then, because we, we also talked to, uh, a few other council members. There were some additions. There were some changes. There were some revisions. We updated you on them. We also sent it to Greg and Kristen for their review. They made some changes that were basically refinement ones about putting in dollar amounts, you know, not making broad statements. In fact, one of the, the statements that, uh, we had made, uh, and you had objected to by saying, "You can't just say that if the donor group can't raise the three million dollars in time, that immediately it just goes to a, a grass field project at the city's expense without any specificity on, on dollars." And when we sent the draft to, uh, to Kristen and Greg, they affirmed what you had said. So that's why that, that number is in there. So that was the level of detail that for hours that we spoke. And yes, you did have to go to, uh, jury duty all day today, but we did, uh, we, we, uh, updated you on the specifics, these minor changes. You don't agree with the...
Not minor.
Let me finish. You don't agree with the minor changes as they're written. And that's absolutely your prerogative. But please don't say that this is substantially different because it is not. Okay?
Well, there, there are some things that are different and I'd rather discuss them privately so we can make the document better. And what I'm asking, you can say yes or no, I'm asking that we have a week to work on this and make it a better document that maybe we could even get all seven of us, since we're all saying we want it. We're agreeing to turf Nursery Field. Maybe we could get all seven of us to vote yes on it. Wouldn't that be wonderful? Um, and, and so I'm just asking for a week. Again, I, I saw this at five o'clock. I think it's changed substantially from what we were working on last night. And, and, and it, it omits some things which I think are very important. I think you all know what I'm talking about. Um, but, um, so I would really request that that we, we table this for now. We pause one week. We have a special meeting next Wednesday.
Another pause?
Just one week. We have a special meeting next Wednesday. We have a special meeting next Wednesday. We, 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 we work on this, we share it with the donor group, we come to a place where everybody is happy with the document. I think that's a better way to proceed than, than, than to come out with this in a rushed manner without, you know, really, I think, adequate consultation.
Well, the thing is, I think everybody would, I think everybody wants to put this to bed.
So do why, everybody does.
Right. I'm sure everybody does. And I definitely do. So now going through this, and again, this was your document that you, when did you put it together? Two months ago?
Part of it, parts of it.
You put together, yeah, well, there's, there's four different points that are changed. So, so everything except these four points, you put together two months ago. So we've had this document two months ago. We've all, you've sent it to me and everybody else, everybody's seen it and it's kind of been accepted. It's, yeah, if we go that route, it looks okay. However, yesterday, decided to fine tune a little bit. So Josh, if you, or Bill, if you want to open this up so we can just go through each of these line items and see if you have a big problem with each of these line items?
I'm not, I'm not going to do it from the dais. I'm not going to do it that way.
Why not? Because it's pretty simple.
Can I?
Julie, Julie, we're just, we're discussing.
That's, that's what we do. That is what a city council does. We discuss it at the dais.
Okay, so one thing that was in there that was taken out was that the city would defend litigation, any litigation related to this project, that we would fund our costs and that we would defend all litigation costs that, you know, against the city in support of this project that's not in here. That was one of the main things, that was one of the main things.
So that's a point, so you're, Josh, can you put this, write this down, number seventeen.
That I said was important. I said I'd rather vote to end the pause and just go back to December, but, but, but you had taken out.
Okay.
You know, that, that we were going to fund the litigation costs.
Okay, we got that, we got that. Okay, what's, what's.
So you're, you're, you agree that we're going to fund the litigation costs?
I'm not agreeing, I'm writing it down.
We're writing it down and we'll, we'll think about it.
What else do you have an issue with?
In a minute. I think thirty days.
Sterling, you didn't make sterling.
I think thirty days is too short.
What would be your proposal?
I'd say sixty days.
Okay.
Okay, write that, write that down, please.
What I really don't like doing is looking at this thing in front of a room full of people. I'd rather spend the time.
But the open meeting law, that's how we work.
No, we, we, there's ways to do it, other than that. And you know there is.
Yeah, I think you were reading it last night.
All right, but so, so, all right, all right, so, all right, I'll, I'll try to, you know, I'll, I don't know where this two hundred and forty, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of beautification projects came from.
Why would we object to that?
Well, I mean, I don't know if you need to specify amount. And it's, and to me, it sounds like we're expecting the donors to pay for that.
No, we're not.
No, not at all.
It says, it says we are not.
One hundred percent the donors are not paying for it.
Not for the donors.
Okay, so, all right, so if the city's going to pay for it.
Bill, to clarify, the draft you gave me said that the donors would pay for beautification costs. We very much, donors, we appreciated that. We also felt it was nebulous and you've taken on a big burden. We also don't know what.
Well, it says we may use any amounts received from the donor group that are not used in the installation of the field.
Let me finish, Bill. We felt that the arrangements around beautification really had to be a discussion between the city and the neighborhood. And it was not fair to put that burden on the donors. So what we did say was if, for example, to keep it real simple, let's say the bids come in at two point nine, but the donors have given us three, because they've said we're going to raise three, we would be allowed to use the balance towards beautification. If the bids come in at three million, the city will have to put in a hundred and fifty to two fifty for beautification. It's a budget that Greg can work with, he can make recommendations, it gives him enough flexibility to come up with.
All to respond to any reasonable ask of the neighborhood.
I just don't understand why we need to put it in here.
Can I also just make a clarification? And I'm going to ask actually one of you from the Lip the Kids Play group to come up here and speak to it, because my understanding is the offer was to fund the field up to three million dollars. It wasn't three million dollars, a blank check with a slush fund. So I want to understand that, because I think that's a distinction further, well, I'm sorry.
No.
Yeah, come on up.
That's a, that's a good, that's a good point.
That's an important point.
Absolutely.
Did they say that they would buy beautification, right?
Yeah.
Okay, well, truly know that.
Yeah, I mean, they did say they'd provide beautification, so.
And that was, I think that was discussed in the planning commission.
Let Matt clarify, because maybe we misunderstood.
I'm really lost right now. I feel like I came to a house closing and my bankers have completely flipped the terms and expect me to just sign something. You go sign us three million dollar house, you're going to close, you get an interest rate, you get a mortgage, but it goes for thirty years and you sit down and they say it's three years and it's twenty-five percent and there you go. You can't even look at it. I, I was trying to follow some of that. It did sound pretty similar, there was the, the delta between when the start of the clock was when we knew what the field cost, which was what we were going to pay for the hundred thousand dollars in advance to actually find out what that cost. And the bids were supposed to expire. So I thought we had a soft sixty days from that acceptance that we thought was a reasonable price.
What's the, can, can we just, this, this is all we.
But that's how it started.
This is all we want to know. This is what, this is what, this is the, and this is not, Matt, this is just a.
But what is the field cost?
Matt, this is a plain question. What is it that the donor group is prepared to do? Is it a limit of three million or is it whatever the field costs? If it costs more than three million, you're prepared to pay more?
Can I read the statement from June fourteenth, which was put in writing?
Yeah.
Sir?
So if the city produces a final plan satisfactory for a high school sized artificial turf multisport field with infill other than crumb rubber, high quality components, attendant accessories and environmental protections, let the kids play will fund the construction costs, including the initial study, the design, the approval expenses on a timely basis in an amount equal to the final cost and not to exceed three million dollars. So that, that is what we put in writing on June fourteenth. It was submitted to the city on June sixteenth. Those were the parameters by which the deal was negotiated in December, but that's the language right there. And that's been posted on our website since June.
Well, it's in the public documents as well.
So potentially the wording in this, we, we.
This is, this, this is.
The wording could, could potentially change in this, that you're including the construction costs, but also beautification.
Yeah.
And you'd include that in. So whatever that is, so, so we're not looking at if, we're not looking at you're dropping three million dollars and we're going to use whatever amount underneath that, up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in beautification. Maybe the beautification is only a hundred and fifty or two hundred or what have you. So I, I don't think that would, I, I, for, for me, from my standpoint, I don't think that's big of an issue as far as language, but you guys, please.
My, my, the idea there was that if you were willing to pay up to three hundred, to, up to three million dollars and that paid for some beautification.
Yeah.
Cool. If the bid comes in higher and we don't have any money left for beautification, we're not going to come back to you and say, where's the beautification money?
Sorry, I don't think we're too far off.
The idea, the idea there, the idea there was, you're done. You're welcome to pay for the beautification, but that we would take that on, because I think it becomes a difficult dynamic if the neighborhood is saying, we want a hundred and eighty thousand dollars worth of stuff and you guys are then saying, we have to go raise money to pay for these things that these folks who are kind of annoyed with you, not you, they don't want it.
Yep.
Okay, so we thought, let's take the let the kids play people out of that issue and just raise the money. If there's some, if there's excess to the pro, to the, to the project, we'll, we'll use it for beautification. If there's not, or whatever we need, the rest is on us. That's the concept here.
Yep.
Trying to be very equitable with that.
It also provides some specificity that, that the let the kid, the donor group may say, well, that's too much, a hundred and fifty, two hundred, whatever it is, but the city is prepared to do that for its.
Yep.
Its constituents.
I just want to take a quick step back and then I think Bill might want to say something. But the, the reason that we are here tonight with this being a go or no go is what we were told by the council in the last meeting, that there will be no more pausing and a decision's going to be made. Hence why we thought it was going to be over today, one way or the other. Why, why Jamie spoke earlier and said, you know, we got this email that it's going to be over, whatever. It's, that was not our idea to explode the offer today, it came from the group. If there's a new proposal, of course, we would love to talk about it and I'm happy to take a pause for a week or two. Like, that's not what bothers us about the pause. What bothers us about the pause was really nothing. If you guys had to do new work, if you were new to the spot, great. That's not what bothered us at all. So I don't want to own the date and the explosion. If you guys think, it sounds like we have something to work with, we are willing to work. So I like the approach and if we get to nowhere, then we get to nowhere. But to do it here and just learning about it now, it's putting us in a weird position. These are the people that are also taxpayers and also donors who are getting dipped on both sides of this. Let's talk. This is good, this is progress. So thank you for that.
So, Matt, the idea is this, and it's a little different, and, and, and I know you know this, but it's just so everyone can appreciate the context. So what we're setting out is what we're prepared to accept. Now, there is nothing, if we were to pass this, or we were to pass something that said also we want some other thing.
Right.
Okay. You have a couple of choices. One, you can say, works for us, good enough, let's make it happen. You could say, we're not doing that, we'll send you what we would do. Or you could hang it up. Your letter to us yesterday said that if we didn't get this sorted by eleven fifty-nine P M. tonight.
That was your deadline.
You guys were going to take your marbles and go home.
That's correct.
And so what we did was we have been working our tails off. That's what we signed up for, so I'm not complaining.
And regardless of your, if your, if your explosion date and time.
It's a community issue.
We were going to be presenting this tonight regardless.
Yeah, okay.
Because we owe this.
Yeah, that's fair.
This, this last pause, the reason why we extended the pause was because I think Josh Cohen wasn't going to be there or I wasn't going to be there or something. So it's, as I mentioned before, hopefully we never see something like this in this town ever again.
I'm with you.
But the issue was, is that it was extended because we felt it was so important to have, even though, even if, even if we're counting votes to ourself, that I, you know, we got a four to two. We're just going to jam it through at four to two. We wanted everybody here, because that's what we're all about with this city council now versus what it has been. We wanted to do that, make sure everybody was here. Everybody had their voice here. Sorry that we couldn't have Josh Cohen here tonight, but he's not here. But we couldn't delay it out for you and for everybody else, just, well, Josh isn't here, so we couldn't possibly do that. We can't do that. We were up, we were going to present this to you tonight. So what he was outlining, there's three options. You say, no, I'm going away, never going to see my money again. One, I love this, great, we're done, we're signing up. And the third is, look, you know what? This looks great on a whole, however, we need to tweak this some.
When is that decision supposed to be made?
So the way this, the way.
We're, we're, we're open, we're working with you on this now. We're done being confrontational in this.
Yep, yep.
We're working with you, we want turf field at nursery, okay? So we're with you. So now we need to forget about what's gone on in the past and we're partners now, we're friends now. So let's just work on that basis. So, so if, if it's going to, if you think it's going to, if you think it's going to be, you need, who knows? Well, let's just say, we want to, we want to be back here in two weeks. Do you think in two weeks we can get this done? I don't know. Who knows? Who knows? But the thing is, we, you want to get it done as soon as possible, we want to get it done as soon as possible. So we're both on the same page, so let's just do it.
But contextually, there's a difference.
Yeah.
Okay. We're a municipal organization. We, we can tell you the terms that we, that we've agreed to here and, and we can pass a resolution. This resolution does not, it's, you perform against it.
Or you don't?
Or you write a note and saying, hey, we're good with this, but we can't handle this or that. Now, we've taken off the table the requirement for you to fund all the beautification costs because we felt that created another opportunity for conflict down the line and we don't think it's, we do not need any more conflict in this community about this topic.
Anything.
Anything, preferably, certainly not this. So we can pass a resolution and you can do what you want. We're not, this isn't a, it, it's weird because you guys are used to, and I am in my day life, used to sitting around a conference table and hashing stuff out. It's just not how a city council, you know, negotiates. So we lay out the terms and then you can, you can do what you want with it.
Is this an arrangement with another counterparty? Like you guys were contracting with someone to build a building or to build a school or to put grass somewhere? Is this how you would present them your offer? You would say, all right, let me get the public together, let me invite them and let me tell them about it in front of everyone without any notice? And say, take it or leave it, because we're a city council? I don't think that is how city councils do business. And it's not how partners do business.
We haven't gotten to that point yet. So, so what, the, the reason that it is vitally important to be talking about this in a public setting is that this is a public space and it will be used by, hopefully, many, many, many children and families and everything. It is extraordinarily important that we hash this out as messy, that, uh, public policy is extraordinarily messy. And I, I totally empathize with the, the ups and downs and the twists and turns of it all. I, I don't wish it on anybody, but in the end, we can all hear it and there will be other, other people who are coming to us in the aftermath of this yelling and being upset with us as well. But it is extraordinarily important that we conduct this in a, in a, in a public setting and, and hear from everybody, hear from you, hear from all of you. So, so we're not doing this to be difficult. This was literally something that, that a majority of us could get behind and we want to end this. We don't want to keep doing this forever and ever and ever. And this is something that is going to, for, for those of us who wanted to promote a grass field, this is going to be something that's very painful for, for us to get behind. But we felt that in order to, you know, to make sure that this ends in some way and, and has a broader appeal, that this was something that we could get behind and some of our, our council members could. So, so that's, that's why it, it has to be in an, in an open and public setting.
Well, all, all we're talking about.
We're giving clarity. We're giving you the clarity of how this, it's, it's been foggy for all this time. Now there's clarity. Bring the money, build a farm.
All I'm requesting, all I'm, excuse me, let me, let me talk. All I'm requesting is a week or two weeks, whenever May, you can do it in May or we could have a special meeting next week. I'm available to sit down and go through all this. I think if we could do this together and, and, and finish what we started, because we really didn't, and include these folks, we want this project to be successful. We want to have the most, the greatest chance of success. We want to make sure that these guys are on board. It's a whole lot better way, you know, to, to, you know, to, to, to make the sausage than to kind of make it and then see if everybody likes it. I mean, let's, let's spend a little bit more time. They've agreed, they're happy to spend a little bit more time. I, I really think we're, we're not that far from, from coming to an agreement on something. And, and the problem is, is everything kind of broke very late yesterday. But I, I really would appreciate if we could just put this off, either to have a special meeting next week or on May one at the next city council meeting and, and have a chance to see if we can really firm up this document, agree to what's in it, share it with these folks, have them say, yeah, this is something that, that we think we can do. We're all agreeing, we want a turf nursery field now. I think let's try to make sure we do it in the best way that's going to be successful.
Right, but, but the thing is, we want to move forward as soon as possible and I, I'm sure you're, you're heard and remember the conversation or the statement I was just making with them?
Yes.
Is that, yes, we are at the point now that we're all on the same side, all on the same team. What we want to produce is just a document going to them. And granted, they're going to take a look at it. This is where our standing, starting point is. So it seems like we've used your document and, and you did bring up the litigation situation on this, so.
That's a very important part of this.
Okay, so maybe that's something we can talk about here and maybe that's something that we can just say, you know what, guys, when we sit down with you in, in a day or tomorrow or whenever we sit down with you, the litigation issue may be something you want to incorporate in this. And, and they'll, and they'll say, yes, we want to have that in there. Well, okay, well, it's in there. Well, okay, well, it's in there.
Then why don't we just share the draft with them tonight, and then we'll come back and talk about it?
No, because Bill, this is a...
That's what you're saying.
I don't think they're prepared, I don't think they're going to be prepared to make a decision on this tonight. I'm pretty confident they're going to want to have some time to think about it.
That's right.
We're going to produce a document to them as a starting point, and that's going to be the starting point.
Here's the document, they can take it.
Okay, so Keith, I agree with you. I think we should give them this as a starting point.
Why are we, why are we, why are we doing this? Why are we doing this? This doesn't make any sense, Bill. This is your document. Let's just bring a motion.
Yeah.
Literally, they need something to start from. That's what we're going to start from. This bickering back and forth is absolutely not necessary.
There's no bickering right now. There's not bickering. I would like to say something.
This isn't bickering? It's not bickering to you, but maybe it is to everybody else.
No, Josh, I'm speaking right now. You've spoken a lot, I would like to speak for a minute, please. Just please, can you just convey that courtesy? Keith, I liked what you said, that we're partners now, right? I like that you said that. I think that we've got, and partners work together. I think, I think it is important, if you're willing, to spend the time to get there. Rather than adopt something that, I have a lot of questions, I'm sure you have a lot of questions, rather than adopting something and then changing it, why not just spend the extra little time to get those changes incorporated and adopt something that everybody feels good about? I think if the hope is, we want to go and, no more acrimony, and move forward, then that plan of just spending a tiny bit more time, which you guys have said you're amenable to, is the reasonable thing to do. Otherwise, it feels quite heavy-handed, and it feels like maybe a little disingenuous, if I'm being honest. So I think that I would like to, I would like to make that motion that we postpone it.
No, I'm going to respond, because there's a mistaken premise here. This is not a contract negotiation. This is where the city says, these are terms that the majority of the council, you haven't had certainty, these are terms that the majority of the council have said they would accept. We put out bid documents. It is the city saying to bidders, these are the terms we will accept. Bids come back. When bids come back, they might say, here's our bid on your terms. They might come back with a note saying, we bid this way, but with these conditions that are added. And the city manager, or the council, whatever body it is, makes a decision at that point what to do. What we're trying to do here is get you a majority view, okay? We tried to see if there was a majority for natural grass. There wasn't. So now, we are taking the next step. Some of us aren't happy about it, but we're going to take it. We represent the community at large, we will put out the terms, and then you guys do what you want. You can raise the money, you can raise the money and say, we have it, we're not giving it to you.
I'm honestly hearing different things from different people.
Do whatever you want. That's how government works.
Right now, I'm hearing some folks say it's the beginning of a partnership, sort of a negotiation. That makes sense to me. And I'm hearing you, I think, say something different, which is, we're going to pass it today, take it or leave it.
No, no.
Nobody's saying that.
What we're doing is we're passing...
I'm not posturing. I'm honest, I don't know.
It's, we pass something that says, this is what this body is willing to accept, because we're all here, because no one of us can do this. You then take it, and you might sit down and say, great, you know what, we can run with it, because a lot of these things don't concern us. We don't have to...
How long do we have?
We don't have, so, let's...
The clock's not starting on us to go collect money today.
Nothing's blowing up. We're working with you to get, we want you to do this, you want us to do it. We don't necessarily, they, there's three people here that voted for grass field. I'm absolutely amazed that they've come over to the dark side. Absolutely amazed.
Not the dark side?
You know what he's trying to say?
Okay, I'm sorry, that was a bad analogy, I'm sorry. Okay, okay, for them to go to this side, I never thought they would go to this side, okay? It was a bad analogy, I apologize for that, unfair. I, they, okay, I'm on your side. From day one, when I sat down with Matt, and I don't know, whenever, we talked on the phone a couple of times in the summer, I wanted feels, I wanted them fixed, and I didn't have a problem with turf fields. So I've explored a lot over the last three months, three and a half months, four months, whatever, and now, ridiculous amount of time. I'm absolutely amazed that Jamie, especially, and you saw what she did in pulling out, I thought she was going to pull out dog poop out of her bag, which wouldn't surprise me. But I'm absolutely amazed that they came over to our side to work all together and come up with a solution on this whole situation. It, seven votes is the way everything should be done. We shouldn't be contentious, we should come to some conclusion that everybody is a little bit unhappy, and everybody's potentially a little bit or a lot happy.
So let's try to get seven votes.
Well, I think eventually we'll get seven votes.
I think we have a few items here.
But we need to start with some document that we're committed to, that this is where we're committed to.
But then that doesn't open room for the dialogue that we're talking about.
How is it not opening room for the dialogue?
They said you're committed to this, which means that you...
Okay, as of today, we're committed to this. So we came up with a solution, we committed to it, we were, our goal was to present something to the city that we were happy with.
Can, so can I ask...
And that's what we're doing. We're committing to, we're following through on our commitment. It should have been done two weeks ago or three weeks ago, but the thing is, we didn't have people there to vote for, seven people there to vote.
Can I ask just a couple, because just some things procedurally here, too? I mean, I think, just to note here, again, there, this, again, it's an amount not to exceed, and it's to cover the cost of the field, and in that cost was the replacement. So it was a 20-year cost that was estimated? And so what by...
Turf fields don't get replaced in 20 years. Turf fields are going to play as an...
No, 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 let me just finish. It was a 20-year, the cost estimates that we received at a high level, again, we don't have the final plans, so were, it was, it was the rough estimate, was $2.8 million. That was the anticipated cost roughly, over 20 years, which included a replacement at the 10, 12-year mark, right? So the field alone, the estimate was $1.3 to $1.7 million. If you're taking out in section 12, the synthetic turf, then what they are raising is not, it's actually 1.3 to 1.7, it's whatever the turf field cost, not the replacement cost. So we're taking the replacement field off of the table with the way this is written. Also, I would think, from a fundraising perspective, that you want to know what your bogey is, right? You want to know what the target is, so that you can tell people, we're almost there, this is the number, just get us across the finish line. What this does is ask them to raise an amount of money that's not, that doesn't have that finality. So what I would like to see us do is go get the plan, get the bid, so they have the number. And if we want to reduce the clock, if you don't want the 60 days, and you guys are amenable to 45 or something, maybe that can happen. But I think you need, the sequencing is off. I think asking them to raise money when they don't know what the number is, is going to potentially hamper their fundraising ability.
That's what the school district does.
Whatever it is.
Can we ask Greg to clarify, clarify a little bit of what Julie's just saying? Because I'm completely, I want to hear what Greg has to say.
Right, but somehow, a discussion was had regarding some type of a surcharge on each hour of rental that would go into a fund, which would then go into replacing the turf in an eight-year period of time.
So that is an...
You actually mentioned that in here, because that was understanding of where the replacement cost was. I, maybe you have a better memory of that, but I, and I, maybe we can default to Greg, it's unfair to him to vote in court on this, but I'd be surprised that a replacement cost was involved with...
It was.
Okay.
And also, I could show it to you, too, because these are all the materials that are on the website, and which...
The original donor group, I have in my notes, and it's very clear, the original donor group was prepared to donate $3 million.
No, that's not, well, they read it, they read what the bid was.
The original donor group, I'm just, I'm not sure what the morphing of the various groups is and why they're two different groups, but back in 2019, the original group was prepared to donate $3 million. That was before inflation, that was before anything.
Was that true? You were in that.
I was in that group as well, because you all never accepted, so...
Right, but that was what, that was in my notes.
It was $2.2 million for the field and the reconstruction, and $800,000 for a replacement field. That was to cover 20 years, to respond to the then council's concerns about having a fiscal problem in eight to 10 years.
I think this is why, Keith, just like a little bit more time massaging it and getting sort of the particulars right, it gets to what you're asking for.
I, it seems like we are moving in that direction. Thank you, Julie.
So do you think we can just work with them and get there?
I...
What?
Nothing, I was going to make a bad joke, but...
Are you agreeing with me that we can give it a little more time and get there?
Don't say that.
Come on, you don't want to agree with me in public?
Of course I do.
Come on, there's a price for everything. You can do it.
Like, everyone up here is going to have to figure out what they want to do.
Josh, can I just say one thing?
The idea here is, the idea here is, and what I'd like to get back to, because we're here, because I think our job is to have these discussions as a council, together in public.
Yes.
And we should do that. So I believe...
There's another party involved.
No, no, that's not how government works, Julie. There's another party that cares. We invite them to meet what we...
There are actually multiple parties that care.
There's two other, there's multiple constituencies that have a variety of concerns and cares. So we are trying to set a standard by which one of those parties is able to get the thing they want. Other parties will be unhappy. We lay that out, you do it, or you say, hey, we started working on it, we have this issue, could you amend your resolution? And we do that, or we discuss it. What you have right now, you have a moment in time where possibly, possibly not, I don't know yet, I haven't made the motion, and I don't, we haven't done a vote, but you have a time right now, as Keith was pointing out, we're three of us who just moved to do a totally different approach, one you have advocated is not appropriate. The three of us who are pushing for that are saying, as we sit here now, okay, that's not working, let's try to make this work. Let's make this the best thing we can make it. Let's eliminate all the questions about, what do we have to do? Okay? And you'll do it, or you'll tell us that there's an issue, there's another meeting, there's 30 days, there's a meeting in between this meeting and 30 days from now. If you want, I don't know if anyone else would agree, we could make it 45 days, and that would create a little bit more flexibility. That would, I, what I want to do is look at a calendar so that it aligned, we use 30 days because it aligned with a meeting.
May 1 is the next date.
Right.
May 1?
So the idea was there's May 1, and then there's still time after May 1.
I mean, we could spend the time between now and May 1 and get this...
Right, and the thing is, what I like to say...
But they'll know where they're starting from.
I also would like to say...
Or you lose, you know...
I want to get this thing, if we agree on May 1, if all of a sudden in a week, we come to terms, I just want to call a special meeting, come in, approve it, and get it done.
Fine, I'm happy to do that, too.
So I don't want to be stuck to some long date out in the future, because I just want to end this. I'm sure you guys want to end this, come to agreement, and then just move on, and get things started.
All right, so let's say, May 1, or, so I agree with you.
Josh.
The idea, the mechanism, again, the way this works is, we would put this out there, we'd give you enough time, and let me make it simpler, so that there are two council meetings, okay? So that there is the May 1 council meeting. When is the next council meeting?
It's a month after that, it's too long. It's like, there's only one starting, or maybe there's a second one in May.
May 15. But I think...
I don't know, why are we waiting that long?
Wait a minute, so I want to pick up on what Keith was just saying, because I thought you were saying that we were going to...
Right, I said something, then Josh started saying something different from my wife.
But I want to talk about what you're saying, because I agree with you.
Okay, Josh, go ahead, finish what you're saying, please.
All I was saying was that if we pass this resolution, we extend the time so that there's another meeting. You have an opportunity to go to work. The job, the primary job here is to raise the money. You can raise the money, you can put it in account, you have your 501(c)(3), you're all sorted. And if there's a technical issue along the way, you can raise it, there's another meeting. And you can raise it at that meeting, and you can say, hey, we've got the money, but we have this concern or that concern. So before we give it, you have the power, you don't have to write a check. No one can make you give us money. We're just saying, these are terms that the majority will accept, and take them, or leave them, or get going.
Josh, can I say one thing?
Or get going and come back. You have a moment in time where you have a group of us up here, who are trying to work hard to make this happen. I wouldn't look a gift horse in the mouth. I don't want this project to go this way, I wanted the first motion I made. I've moved on, and here we go. This is that opportunity.
Josh, let me just say...
And the thing is, and this...
Wait, Keith, I just called on Bill. Can we just have a little, can we just bill this in line here?
One of the things that we had in this last night, that's not in there, I'll read it to you. The City of Rye, as is customary and general practice, will defend in good faith any litigation in which it is a named party as it relates to the construction of a synthetic turf field and nursery field. If the donor group is subject to any lawsuit in connection with the nursery field project, they will cover their own legal costs with additional funds raised outside of the donation amount, $3 million. So for some reason, this paragraph got lost between, yeah, hold on.
I think, Bill, I think we already covered this.
No, because I'm reading the full paragraph.
Okay, I think we already covered this. You already said that you had an issue with this, and that's number 17. So why are we hashing over this again?
You let me finish, please.
You guys, let's just have a little, let's just take it down.
So, I don't understand why this is not in there. I don't understand why a donor group...
I'll tell you why.
Why, can let me finish. I don't understand why the donor group would donate money if we were going to defend a decision of the city council to accept the gift and do the field. This has to be in there. I don't see how it cannot be in there.
Bill, is that your only issue with this document?
No, we've already talked about some of the others, and I want to spend some time, because I haven't had the time to spend to go through it, to make sure I don't have any other issues.
You wrote most of this document, but Bill...
Oh my goodness.
I want to know, if that's the only question, then I would ask that we take that up in executive session, because the questions relating to that, I don't think it is necessary to address that issue and how we address it, to at least agree that if we're going to go for it. If, for example, and I'm sure you've figured this out already, if, for example, for some reason we pass this, and we don't agree to defend the litigation, you're probably not going to hand us the check. But there are reasons that I have to, on advice of council, save for an executive session to discuss how that would work. It doesn't put you in jeopardy, because you haven't put the money up.
It puts the project in jeopardy. I mean, this is, once again, this deal was offered to us in real time, and we haven't had a chance to consider it at all. The idea that the city wouldn't defend itself, and the fact that that's something you have to consider in executive session, when the whole point of presenting this offer for the first time to this group after five years was to bring the light of, you know, public process onto it, I find just kind of hard to take.
Bill, Bill...
Honestly, I didn't, it's illegal. Has the city ever not defended itself in litigation before?
Has the city ever not defended itself?
Am I using your correct first name, because I remember your last name, but, okay, sorry, Bill.
Wait, wait.
I think as a lawyer, I think as a lawyer, you can appreciate that there are some legal questions, you may not have discerned what they might be, that we need to address, and that is why that's been separated out. So I would just say, do us the courtesy of understanding, there's no, there's, you're not going to be, you're not going to pay for litigation, it's not your problem.
I would have asked for the courtesy to see the deal before it was presented to me in, live in a meeting. I still haven't actually read the words myself.
This is, this is the error. It's not a deal, it's an ask. These are terms we would accept. You can then negotiate or not.
But I'm sure it's full of contingencies, that if they're not acted upon, other things will occur. I mean, you're passing a resolution, it'll only be one resolution. If nothing else happens, then that is the action of the council, right? You're setting up, setting us on a path, setting yourself and the city on a path, that has not been properly considered by the people who, at least our group, has been probably more involved than most of the folks in this room for this whole time, not to mention, I assume, the rest of the folks who are involved. I think everyone should see the deal. I think we should see it, I think the folks who oppose the project should see it carefully, and we should all take the time, a week, two weeks, to reach an agreement that we can, you know, that they can make their best arguments against, and we can be sure that we can execute on, so it does in fact succeed, if that's what we want.
Sounds like we've already been there, but thanks for bringing it up again.
There's a choice, there's a grass field or a turf field, a synthetic turf field. So we tried to do a grass field, we failed. Now we're going to try to do a synthetic turf field.
This is about the money, this is about funding.
The funding of the project.
And shouldn't the people who have to raise the money have an opportunity to weigh in on the terms?
They, they can raise the money, or not raise the money, or say, we're going to raise the money, and these are the terms. Or we can put it off, and we can extend, if you, you know, I don't know, we could.
We could put it, I mean, we could put it off again, I mean, really, this is what, this is the, the emails that we've been getting for, for months and months and months is enough already, enough already, enough already. And we have tried, in good faith, to end this pause, but now people are asking for more delays. So, listen.
I don't think it's a delay.
I am, I am, I, at this point, I will make a motion to extend the pause, if that's what it's going to be about, is that.
Can I ask a question, Josh? Is your motion still on the floor?
To May 1st? Second, you want to, okay. All in favor? We can talk about it.
Wait, wait, wait.
Put the order.
Okay, fair enough.
Your resolution had, was there a second-tier resolution on that, on that thing? Are we just discussing?
We were just discussing, no.
So there was no, you put the resolution out there, you discuss it, we never seconded it?
No, there was no motion.
I just wanted to make sure.
Okay, so we're extending the pause.
So we have a motion to, can I, can I?
I was trying to make, I was trying to make the motion, and then people jumped in, so.
So can, so, I just want to be clear what we're doing. We are going to extend with, with the intent of working with the donor group to get, no, 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 no.
No, no, we're not. We're going to extend the pause and take it up at the May 1st meeting, and the donor group.
But is there going to be no working with the donor group to try to get this?
Please, Julie.
No, I was talking, Keith, you keep, keep interrupting me. And I just, I'm just asking.
He was trying to answer the question, and then you jumped in again. Go ahead, go ahead, Josh, go ahead.
The answer is, the answer to the question is this.
Keith, wait, no, Josh, for a moment, please. Keith, I'm trying to be really patient, but you have cut me off every single time. Every single time I've opened my mouth, you have talked over me and deferred to Josh and Ethan. I would just like a tiny bit of professional collegial courtesy to not do that right now. We have a motion. I am saying, the extension of the pause should be to get this in a document, get this document to a place where everybody's more comfortable. I think if there is feedback from you, we will take it. If you have things you want to put in, let's look at it. I certainly have things that I would like to see in there. I think if the intent is to be collaborative, let's work to get this to a place, then, then that's what we should be doing. It's not, we're deferring and looking at this exact thing in two weeks. It's, let's get this to a place, and then we'll present it at that meeting. So with that motion and that second, I would like to have.
Let me explain.
A vote.
So the question, that, that wasn't the motion. The motion was simply to extend the pause.
But is there going to be no work?
Seconded.
And it's been seconded.
To May 1.
And people can use the time between now and May 1 to do whatever, whatever they want to do. And, and some of us will hunker down and try to ferret this out. You guys will have a copy, you can do what you want with it.
Yes, so it will be, it will be publicly shared on the, on the website, and anybody, because this is, this is City Hall, and we are your representatives. So it's not a deal, it's not a contract, it's a resolution, and anybody within this time period can weigh in. And so we will, in, in the capacity that we're able to, we will confer with each other, but there won't be sitting down with, you know, deal-making with, you know, with a group or not.